Let's go ahead and call meetings of order. Uh, if we're coming in to pledge. But the reasons to the body of the United States of America and to the republic of America for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most gracious and beloved Lord, we thank you for who you are. You alone are good, Lord. We thank you for that. Father, we pray that you be able to speak, that you conduct it in a manner that brings you glory. And we lift our city up to you, Lord. That everything continues to go well. May he ask me to you. My dear spirit, will you, our individual walks in here? In Christ, I need your presence.
Roll call. Do you? Here. Here.
Here, Mark.
Here. Okay, the first item of business is approval of tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
What's he say?
Okay, second by Mark. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and that's approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the August twenty-sixth and September ninth meetings?
So.
Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and those are approved. Next item is the financials, and those are not available tonight in the packet. They're still being worked on, so I would entertain a motion to table of the, um, city and water and sewer financials.
So.
Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, and all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and that's approved. Those are dead. Park report, just fire the park.
Um, the biggest thing news we've got this month is the county's bonus of an engine. It's a two thousand twenty-five Fowles Fire Engine. Um, it should be here in about two weeks. So, um, told the mayor last week, I think, when I found out. But I've been pleading with the county for the last several months to get us an engine, and it worked, I guess. So, that'll help on the engine's status for a little while. We'll still have to replace the other one that's twenty-two, three years old here in the next year or two, but, um, that's a big plus, having a new engine. Um, we're looking at the one we bought, um, from the county a few months ago for like eighteen thousand dollars or whatever it was to pay for the maintenance or the pit that we purchased from the county that they gave to us. I might be looking at selling it to Elm Springs because we were in that room of our days. So, and I'll bring it out back to the council as soon as we figure something out on that. But it's still be our engine, just blown down in Springs. No questions?
Daniel, thank you.
Chief, what's your pancake breakfast?
Oh, pancake breakfast October fourth, from six to ten.
Thank you. Next item is the police report.
Good evening. Um, apologize on behalf of Chief Chrisman, he is still out. He should be back tomorrow morning, uh, brought out of Bush's tail, he says his regards. Y'all have the statistics for last month? If you have any questions, that's about all we've got, everyone? Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is planning report.
Good evening. So, planning report for, uh, month of September, um, or items we got going in, or sorry. The, uh, planning items that we have going forward for the month of October, are the Plymouth Platte, the Trojan subdivision and the rezoning for Daryl and Theresa Bush. Uh, who else is, are still working on the, you know, uh, Master Street Plan, Future Land Use Plan updates. Both of these are old items that's been tabled previously, and it's things that, you know, just had some minor things that need to be worked on. But the September City Council items that, you know, we discussed at the work session, there's still the other two rezonings, the PZD for the C and K Engineering. This is the one that's at the intersection of Ford and Highway two sixty-four. The commission voted to affirm this post rezoning and move that PZD to the City Council. And then we have the rezoning for, uh, Jameson City where the, uh, one sixteen Rainbow Road. And this was the forty acres that the planning commission also affirmed to be rezoned to R three and moved that on the City Council. So those are the ones y'all will be looking at tonight. Um, we can discuss that later, and I'll, I have stuff that we can put up on the board if we want to when we get to that point. And then just the general updates was, we're still working with Garber on our zoning document. And we've also met regarding the Master Street Plan, Future Land Use Plan. Uh, met with the planning commission at the meeting last Monday night. We've got some minor changes we're gonna make as far as, uh, one area south of town on the Ford area and kind of some collector streets that we were proposing run through there. Maybe change those to just local connections and let those run through. But, um, we're gonna let the planning commission make that determination at their next meeting, um, in two weeks. So, unless y'all have any specific questions or anything else, um, we can come back to the rezonings that y'all have before we even get to that point.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the attachments to this one, that one up there?
Mm-hmm.
On the front it says, if I'm reading it correctly, on number two under September, R three? Is that correct? And then on the attachment that says R four.
Yes, so they have amended their proposal at the meeting to change it from R four to R three. So that's why it's showing up differently down there for y'all's items. But the planning commission had, uh, voted to affirm the R three zoning coming before y'all, and that's what your ordinance shows as R three. Yeah, we verified that with Justin on, uh, plenty of last week when we was looking at all that.
Thank you.
Right, thank you all.
Next item is water and sewer.
Hello, everyone. Um, the open workboards are looking good. We have one potential leak. Um, we're waiting on ARWA to come back out and detect, to confirm that leak, and if they do, uh, we'll fix it. And then they're gonna be continuing leak detection, uh, when they do come into town, so hopefully they'll find, uh, more for us to fix. But right now, that's the only one that we're aware of. Uh, we still have one open position, but we've extended an offer to a gentleman, so hopefully by next meeting that will be filled. The water loss went down to thirty-seven percent. Um, likely a big portion of that was the Allen Street line replacement, where we took out that section of galvanized pipe. We, uh, have found a few other areas that are galvanized, which are likely the biggest culprits for water loss. Uh, a section's gonna be, uh, replaced when R doc comes through with the highway. And the other section, we're working on a game plan to, um, get those customers tied in to our PVC line because they now have access to two lines, and so we'll abandon that area with, uh, galvanized. So. Any questions?
Thank you. I just wanna make a statement that the water loss down to thirty-seven percent for August, which is great, and that's a right move. We did discuss during our meeting that perhaps we gotta look at it next budget adding some staffing or water as well, since the town is growing. However, the staffing has not changed for the year.
There you go.
Chief, mayor's report. Okay, uh, so the NACCA listation project, we issued substantial completion on that only yesterday. Uh, that's gonna be an update that's done from Florida's related items. Uh, as far as the engineering items that R docs have, so West Wallace, Red and Sands Road sidewalk project, R docs approved the design, and so we've just got a few items from there to get the sign, and we'll be able to get that advertised in, uh, traffic signal. So the hole should have been manufactured, completed back in September that week. And construction is technically scheduled to begin in September twenty-nine, subject to the inconvenience. And also, Daniel provided the mayor will some guidance on where we're gonna go with the government. Starts getting on the branch recommendations, uh, so we got that to the mayor for me.
Thank you. Turnage report.
Good evening, council, uh, a couple items. Uh, one is the coffee shop lease that's on the agenda. Uh, I did receive a signed copy of that from, uh, the tenant, and, uh, so we'll prove that tonight, that that'll be ready for, uh, for signature. Uh, at the October, uh, work session, I know we talked about the previous work session, uh, bringing forward the, uh, the franchise, the revised franchise ordinances for, uh, Black Hills Gas, or Swetco and Harold Electric in the bright speed. And, uh, we didn't do that because I was, uh, still struggling to get something back from Swetco and Harold Electric, so I think we're ready for the October meeting. Uh, the, the idea would be that, uh, we bring it forward to you in the work session in October for approval in, uh, uh, the October meeting later in the month. And then for the new reins to be able to effect in January, but good time, two months' time for people to change up and refer to that, that fact. Uh, otherwise, we're looking on a number of easements, right away, uh, it's had to shoot up the last, um, month, a lot of requirement, uh, along with, uh, various, various other things we have on our agenda. Uh, are there any questions?
Thank you. Thanks. Next item is park treacherous report. Okay. Next item is mayor's report. Uh, on September sixth, we held the Northwest South Arkansas Housing Supply and Affordability Summit in this building. We had a great turnout with everyone from senators and congressmen, reps, state, uh, and senators and reps, mayors, planners, building inspectors, developers, builders, and finance officers. Uh, the conversation was open and, and very informative, and they, uh, I do wanna thank Municipal League, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning and Groundworks for their assistance in that, in that endeavor. And Municipal League is continuing the discussion with other regional meetings around the state. And on the, uh, weekend of October tenth and eleventh, we plan to have our fall thing up where, uh, that's the date that, that's looking like that's when that will happen. So that's all I've got at this time. Next item is public comments. Anyone? All right then, uh, follow-up questions on the listation update? I think you mentioned a few minutes ago, we have just recently, recently completed it. And we're in the final, uh, workup of the, uh, financials and closing out the grant and the finance, uh, with day in our states. So we're, we're coming to the end of that project. And drainage, uh, Daniel was working on some drainage items. Uh, don't really have, uh, a lot of information there except that he is working forward with, uh, some of the design and the discussion on, on options there. Next item on the agenda is new business, a resolution on President Ray of Property Tax for the City of Cape Springs for twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to approve? So, got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, is there any discussion?
For the record, it's staying the same, correct?
It is staying exactly the same.
I just wanted to.
Yes, it's staying at two point five seven mils.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and that did pass, is it forty-eight?
Twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Okay. Next item is a resolution approving the lease agreement with the coffee house. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion from MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and it's approved, that's twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine. Next item is the resolution to set forth authorized signers for the, uh, bank accounts. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second?
Sir.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign. That one is approved, it's item twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. Next item is a resolution approving real estate exchange agreement between, or basically for the water tower location. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move it over.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second? Second by Erica, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and that one's approved, that's twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. Next item is the, uh, resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five budget. Do I hear a motion to approve? I have one, if we could, I'd like a motion so we can discuss. Take a motion, so. Okay, motion by MC, do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. I'll open the floor with, uh, for discussion, and I'll just point out what I'm doing here. I've been working on the, uh, financials and looking at the midterm budget. Everything appears to be adjustable, but I found a couple of things. One is that, uh, most of this did not reflect the updated, uh, uh, resolutions and things throughout the year, this brings apparent. I didn't add anything, but I did subtract one item, which is the, uh, it's a withholding that was shown on there for the, uh, uh, for the insurance product. And so I just took that off because we don't show the holdings within the budget. And then I really want to give, uh, our new finance director an opportunity to start with something clean and fresh that was just approved. I did not add anything to any department. I did not deduct anything except what I just noted. So that is my reasoning in, in bringing this at this time. I would have made you aware of a couple of minor adjustments and moved on because I think we're good till the end of the year from what I've seen. But that was, nothing here has really changed except that one item.
So, I have a question. So since we don't have the financial, why do we make these changes?
This is with the budget, the financials didn't have these changes put in for the year. And so that's what we've been taking on. This is just a review of the budget itself, and I went through and spent last two weeks making sure that every resolution was added to it and every, uh, uh, ordinance to affect the funding was added to it, and I changed nothing else.
Nothing else can change.
Nothing else, except that one line I mentioned that really shouldn't be budgeted.
So if any news in financial, it's not like, I think that's a lot of what we should.
The financials we bring to, I'll, I'll be bringing the financials to the next work session. This will give, uh, uh, part of the chance to load the, this and to be able to bring everything up to date and to come to the work session with, and discussing those financials with them.
So all the resolution that we have passed and everything.
Are reflected in this. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those like to sign, and that did pass. That's twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two. Next item, this, uh, ordinance to rezone approximately seven acres with the PZD at the corner of, um, Ford Lane and two sixty-four. Do I hear a motion to suspend rules in place this on third and final reading by Title I? So, got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Sir.
Second by Jeremy. Um, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica? Yes, Jeremy?
Yes.
Rush?
Yes.
And see?
Yes.
Here, look, we have orders number.
Sure. Twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Orders number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, City of Cape Springs, Connecticut, Arkansas. Orders to rezone approximately seven point zero four acres located at parcel number zero five dash one, zero 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 two dash zero zero two from neighborhood commercial C three to the planned zoning district PZD, City of Cape Springs.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So, got a motion from MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, any discussion?
Yes. Um, I think they did a wonderful job here, but there's two concerns I have. It's going right next to, uh, the townhomes and Victoria, uh, Richard and Brentwood. Um, I, I personally don't think it's a good idea to have a bar. There's, it says bar around the tavern. I understand the tavern, but having a bar open late, I don't think is really conducive for that area. And same with the dance hall, you have a dance hall, you're sending maybe lucky dances or a space to rent, something along those lines. I don't think that would be very conducive for that area as well. And then have a micro bakery slash restaurant, um, I would worry about cut off time for that. Those are my concerns with, with this, otherwise I feel it's wonderfully put together. I just need to think of the residents and the town, the future residents of the town home. We also have Hill Press going up there, we have this other development going up on Wayboat beside Bridgewood. So, those are my concerns, those are my three concerns with this.
Couple of questions. Under on the drawing?
Yes, sir.
Here. Is that your, your potential pond?
Future location, yes, potential.
So, what about this spring water drain?
Like, it's gonna be holding to the pond, you know, direct to the same location, it does it the same way, like out, out of, you know, here, oh, soon, but that's that relationship, because these aren't drawings, and we're not there to suggest. So, it's really not time to ask that question.
So, we could eventually have more water running now?
No, I mean, not more necessarily. I mean, because that's what the pond is for, is to hold it, you know, and release it at their rate speed.
In the two hundred year floods, if this would've been there, we wouldn't have had extra water, would it down the hunt?
I don't know, that's for the engineer to figure out. As far as, you know, once they get to the actual development stage of it.
I, I think, what?
I mean, they're just showing that as a future location for pond, but I mean, they haven't done the engineering yet because we're still in the zoning, in kind of stage of this.
We're just going on the song, you're right?
Yes, sir.
So the rest of this is up to the planning commission?
I mean, it's up to the ordinances and coaches of the city to put in place. You have a drainage manual, updates and everything, and you have the engineer to review.
I understand, up to, up to the engineers, the planning commission.
Yes. Yes.
Good luck, Erica.
Um, but what do we do about these concerns? Can we strike these? The council, do you have an opinion on a bar, dance hall, a brewery restaurant? That's a concern. How about, it's a good shot of time, just kind of like Costa Pina, it's open until midnight. What, is this the time to address this? Like now, striking things?
I would say it would have been the time to address it at the work session when they could have had it addressed before we came to this point to the.
I express my concerns about the tavern, um, bar.
Say that Justin would probably weigh in on that.
Can I ask a question? Erica, we're already looking at, uh.
I'm looking at their, um.
Directly for the high school stage?
It doesn't have.
Exhibit D?
It's the.
Exhibit D allows commercial uses.
Does it, does it reflect enough additional use?
It's always out of the conditional use.
All of the are commercial uses.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is that, is that what we're looking at? So.
Yes, so I guess I don't. So is that still something that council could, that they need to permit? That we would still have control? Or is it something that you need to strike now? Those are just my concerns.
And are you the applicant, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not asking this question too, but, um, uh, so I guess these are the available uses that will be there. Should they want to do a conditional use, it has to come through a whole different process in the city or would you get a conditional use permit at that point?
Who would issue that though?
What's that?
Who would issue that permit though?
The condition use goes to, uh, planning permission.
Board of zoning adjustment, yeah.
Uh, it goes to both of them.
I think it's a P Z A board of zoning adjustment. I may be wrong in explaining. It's the same for.
Goes to planning permission. If, if it's denied or there's a green party, they can appeal that to the city council. Uh, but most of the, most of the, uh, conditional use permits go to planning permission. And at that point, planning permission, uh, is able through the code to put certain conditions on there like hours of operation.
Oh, okay.
No outside, no outside noises, uh, kind of, you know, they. Designed to address uses that may have impact on neighboring properties. So you can give some example, if they like to adjustibles over or go outside use or whatever.
So it has another chance. This isn't just.
That's correct.
And I, and I did bring up the bar, the lounge and tavern.
Yes, and we talked about how the conditional use in the last meeting also.
Yes, but, um, I didn't have an actual definition. So, okay.
And those are all things that are currently allowed in the existing zone as it is under C three. So they just set it up for conditional use. Yes, sir.
That, uh, my food is support against what she's asking, but she didn't bring it in last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we did discuss it. We did explain that, I understand that, too. That when you do P Z D, this conditional use it can be adjusted for the C three. Because it was P Z D, it wasn't just regular changes on. So if you wanted to take something off this, this, you put that down.
Oh, yes, I mean, that.
I understand that a lot of people just think that.
Yes.
Not able to undo P Z D. That was one of the benefits that you guys were saying with P Z D, that if you want to change something, we can change it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Now, we didn't change it. She did bring it in the board session. I just, um, comfortable with hearing that she didn't bring it to the board session.
I think it was probably handled at the work session through the discussion of being a conditional use approval. I imagine that's what it was. But I would have to let the applicant speak to that. I mean, it's their application.
I, I think it'd be good to have the applicant speak to it on what their, what their plans are specifically with regards to those particular uses.
Yes, we don't have any plans for those uses. We just want to have those options sometime in the future. And with conditional use, so they would have to come back to the city and actually we've had all the conditions simply that the city wanted for those approvals to come through. Because they can't be, those can't be done without coming back to the city and conditional use would put hours for any conditions on there, um, as we discussed. I think, uh, during the work session, I thought we were good with the fact that as long as it had come back to the city, that the bar, the dining stuff could be left on there. But it still had to be approved through the city and meet all their requirements. That's what I'm saying.
I was perfectly fine with tavern. I'm not okay with bar. That is my personal opinion and.
Uh, I think my understanding was that. I think she brought it up and we discussed that we had P Z D. In fact, we went through this. I asked for the list of things and we discussed it. We can go back to the minutes, I guess, look at it and see what we discussed, but, you know, it was. If you guys decided not to do it, that's one thing. I'm okay with that. I'm just saying that, you know, we didn't bring it. We did bring it up. We discussed it. That she did bring it up. I just want to make sure we're very transparent on this issue. We did bring it up. It could have been, it could have been changed here because it was a P Z D. They decided not to, for whatever reason it is. Uh, okay, we did. As long as we are clear, what, I don't want any, money bother here. I want it straightforward here with everybody on. I'm uncomfortable with the, with this statement. It was brought up here. We did discuss. She did bring it up. I remember that I asked you specifically, did you have it, was you like?
Yeah, I wish.
Yes, you said, yeah, we do. It has what P Z D is for. Otherwise, really, the only reason P Z D is for that. Otherwise, the city doesn't have that much ordinance right now. That's why we're using a lot of P Z D. Otherwise, P Z D is specifically used in a specific situation to change it. And if I'm wrong, I think it is.
Let me ask a P Z D for, yes.
I will say, having been at the planning meeting as well, and absolutely you did bring it up at this meeting, that's, that's no question about that. But having been at the planning meetings as well, they spend probably what, plus an hour one night going through a whole list of things, issues to have in it.
I understand.
They kept a few of them. They got rid of others. They, there was a very good discussion back and forth. Uh, I will say for the applicant that he has been very cooperative and working with us on a lot of that. But, uh, if that's a concern that we need to address tonight, is that something we go in tonight?
Well, if, uh, it might be good to kind of continue on the discussion to see what the applicant, uh, uh, thinks about that. This is, uh, his application and, uh, it's his application. And, uh, uh, I, I, I think he's willing to, uh, willing to, uh, make a change. That's one thing. Um, but if he's not, you know, he may want another thing on vote that, uh, to see where the, where the council is, or he may want to say, hey, maybe some time. Uh, a week or two, try to see like more fruits of this. So it might be good for the, the applicant to discuss.
So what's the specific word that's holding this up? Just the word bar?
Bar, lounge, because I think, I think that they were saying is I'm okay with tavern. Does the tavern have food, correct? I'm assuming. Do you have food? Do you have it going? Usually, it might be. Like I said, I'm only.
I guess, uh, our question or concern is, I guess, you know, if it's a restaurant that has a bar included in it for food, drinks and everything else. Is that the issue? Does that fall into the same?
You said you were a favorite tavern, sir. So that was.
I'm okay, I'm okay. But just as, as a bar and a lounge, to me, a bar, primarily alcohol. You're going to get bar food. You're staying until midnight or whatever the cutoff is here. And same kind of the lounge, you probably have, it's more relaxed. You're primarily serving alcohol, maybe some herbs. I'm okay with tavern. I'm okay with the restaurant. I just don't want the primary, um, I guess, thing, soul or the attraction to be alcoholized. For a neighborhood that has townhomes that's going next to a residential neighborhood Brentwood that's across the street from Bridgewood. Um, and then we have Hillcrest coming up. I just don't think it's a very, plus the townhomes that are right next to a bar. That, that's the only aspect. If that's a restaurant bar, I mean, they're not going to be open till, you know, midnight or whatever the cutoff is. I don't know.
The restaurant would be permitted use, so if there was a.
Yeah, and restaurants have, you sit at the bar. I mean, that's very common.
I think you want to look at the, David, I don't have the definitions of, of all the uses in front of me, but I, I assume our definition says that that's what it's primarily for alcohol, not serving.
Yes.
And I, I would assume the lounge is kind of the same aspect. A laid back, you probably have any more.
I would, yeah, I would, I would assume that as well.
So that's, that's why I say that. Tavern?
Sorry, I'm, I have a question to, part of the, relying on a group. Um, would, so would that be a conditional use? Is that still, is that a pretty big part of this condition of use? So that come through here to get all parts of that approved essentially? It sounds like, is it, is it the bar part or is it more the hours part? I guess is my question.
I mean, to me, the hours are the reason the, the, this is. Like if it's like super loud music, like I can tell with people looking, you know, on their feet.
Well, those are all the, the, the condition use process, you know, as far as.
I think there are.
Loads of box, you know.
Very area, very, it's a very area to speak of.
I just don't know it very.
No, I mean, then I think there are a lot of, most of them. But I, I look at it just slightly differently, but, I mean, because the word, it's hard to. It's, there's a lot of gray area. There's semantics here, there's ambiguity and gray. But I think, yeah, if we had, to me at least, I would say me, but if I had confidence that the noise level wouldn't be excessive and it wouldn't be like open at two AM, um, you know, a lot, we could restrict the hours and maybe that comes later, like seven. Um, you know, like we wouldn't, we wouldn't get something like that from the other way. Being next to, you know, sort of getting the next thing, you get them in order, working at kids.
Or the deaf kids.
Yeah, I think that's all part of those conditional use processes, ensuring that all those conditions are implemented for each thing that has a conditional use. That's why you don't have to get a permit in conditional use.
I understand, but other things have come through here and it all hasn't been approved and then things don't turn out the way they said they were going to. So I'm just looking, I, like I said, on one vote, I would like bar and lounge full. I brought it up last time. Um, I feel like the dance hall, I need to restrict hours on that. Microbrewery is a restaurant that pulls the very strong industry. Hours can be restricted on that. But I ain't one vote, so.
We like restaurants. Restaurants serve alcohol, it's a, it's a very area.
But I'm okay with that because it's, it's a restaurant. It's Costa Pina. And we have a council member that doesn't live too far from that.
It's just like, how do we even know that they're, that are.
I think in our head, we agree there's a lot of gray area there, which we thought that's what the conditional use was to use. And obviously I understand that with this. If there's something we can do on there, it sounds like it's more of a problem, but you could just go to planning instead of council and maybe they don't say so. I understand that. A problem maybe. There any way we could make it a conditional use that the city council has to be a part of making those terms for them?
Is that possible, Justin?
Not the way that our code currently is. Uh, sorry, I, I, I did try to be creative there. Yeah, I didn't think of that, but, uh, I don't know the way right now.
Yes, sir.
I happen to go to the church, which is right across the street. They're planning a playground out there in the front. That's what initially the plan are doing. And I, I sure would hate to see a bar on Wednesday nights. We have kids in church and with the playground would be out there. So I really would hate to see a bar or lounge in there. Me even the tavern, but I understand. But it seems like it's very important to you guys to take a stand on this one issue here about the bar or anything. So, uh, I think we'll just let it go a little.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything set in stone where we're going to have a bar. We're just, we had the institution use before. I think that's a part of what we stand still, but I don't think we're close to discussing.
What, what I would like to add that, maybe to your point, is there was a use left out here that in the future you thought, oh, maybe we left this out. The, the way to address that would be for a limited, uh, P Z D plan. So you did your plan, bring it back forward to have, to have that. So there is that option.
And then that would bring it to the council.
Can, can they recommend that they do that and have that line up in the chart?
Could they amend it? Right, that's a good use.
They remint the word bar from the end line.
Have that on the chart.
Would I recommend any, uh, Erica, do you want any motion of it? Uh, and we can see whether that passes.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to amend?
I can, I can do amend striking the word bar and the word from, uh, this P Z D.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, strike, amend, to strike the word bar and lounge from the P Z D. Do I hear a second? Second by M C. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, or does that have to go since it's an ordinance?
Well, that was motion to amend.
To amend, okay, so we're good.
Did you, yeah, you didn't ask for any post, I'm sorry, did you have any post?
There, was there any post? No. So it did pass.
So, uh, so the ordinance that they did, it was, uh, agreed to by the, on the applicant. Now you can, uh, take that. I heard, we already made a rule, right?
Uh, yeah, we made the rule and now we're, uh, we made a motion in second to approve that we were having a discussion. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes, Erica?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Okay, that did pass. So that will be twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Do I hear, uh, our next item is the ordinance to rezone thirty-nine point nine seven acres located at one sixteen South Rainbow Road. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third reading? Got a motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Any, uh, or let's go ahead and roll call.
Erica?
Uh, yes.
Juan?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
All right.
It's order number two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen, City Case Springs, Mid County Arkansas. Orders to rezone approximately thirty-nine point ninety-seven acres located at one sixteen South Rainbow Road from general agriculture day one to single family residential bar three in City Case Springs, Arkansas.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve? A motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second? Second by M C. Any discussion? Roll call.
Juan?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Yes.
That was passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance adopting standard specifications for water and sewer. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading? A motion by M C. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Roll call.
M C?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Order number, oops. Down there, uh, it should be two thousand twenty-five. Actually, uh, City Case Springs, Mid County Arkansas. Orders adopting standard specifications for water and sewer facilities. Repealing code provisions in conflict therewith, there's urgency.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by M C. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Juan?
Yes.
Yes, Erica?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. And do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
So.
Got a motion by Erica. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes. Juan? Yes.
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 Okay, that was approved. And if we have no further, um, business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Mike. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Jeremy. Aye, thank you all for your service.